To order, roll call please.
Mr. Petrie.
Here.
Mrs. Farola.
Here.
Mr. Hofer.
Here.
Ms. Terry.
Here.
Mr. Ray.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, approval of minutes. It is recommended that the board approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 16, 2022, Exhibit 1.
Some of...
Second.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Ms. Farola.
Yes.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes. Item passes. Item five, citizens' comment on agenda items. Citizens' comments on agenda items are welcome at this time. Participants shall be limited to five-minute durations. Seeing none. Item six, payment of bills monthly. It is recommended that the board approve payment of bills for the month of August pending audit, Exhibit 2.
Some of...
Second.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item seven, acceptance of financial reports. It is recommended that the board accept the financial reports from the treasurer for August 2022, Exhibit 3, 4, and 5.
I'll make a motion to pass.
A second.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item eight, personnel. It is recommended that the board accept, approve the following personnel items. 8.1, retirement resignation. Accept the retirement resignation of cafeteria manager Deborah Cutwright effective October 1, 2022. 8.2 resignation. Accept the resignation of classified employee Amy Hurst effective end of workday September 9, 2022. Amy will be placed on the classified substitute list. 8.3 resignation. Accept the resignation of classified employee Nanette Pelkey effective August 16, 2022. Nanette will be placed on the classified substitute list. 8.4 resignation. Accept the resignation of teacher Ashley Fraley effective the 2022-23 school year. 8.5 employment. Reemploy Heather Meeker from the reduction in force list per the negotiated agreement with SLAC as a kindergarten teacher at Spring Hill Elementary effective the 2022-23 school year. 8.6 employment. Employ Elena Jackson as a 100% teacher per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure effective the 2022-23 school year. 8.7 employment. Reassign the following classified employees per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure. Jelena Padgett, 7-hour cook at Shrop Intermediate effective August 19, 2022. Jennifer Ray, 7-hour cook at Spring Hill Elementary effective August 24, 2022. Brandy Nangle, 2-hour cafeteria employee at Shrop Intermediate effective August 24, 2022. Crystal Shoemaker, 7-hour educational assistant at Springfield High School and Junior High effective August 24, 2022. Amy Ternowski, 6.5-hour teaching assistant at Shrop Intermediate effective August 24, 2022. Lynn Benninger, 4.5-hour routed bus driver on Route 63 effective August 24, 2022. Don Black, 2-hour educational assistant at Springfield High School and Junior High effective September 6, 2022, in addition to bus driver position. Laura Shook, 2-hour educational assistant at Springfield High School and Junior High effective September 6, 2022. Tracy Holstein, 4-hour custodian at Spring Hill Elementary and Shrop Intermediate effective September 6, 2022, in addition to cafeteria position. Joanna Hanschaw, 2-hour educational assistant at Spring Hill Elementary effective September 22, 2022, in addition to everyday reader position. Grace Hedrick, 7-hour cook at Springfield High School and Junior High effective September 19, 2022. Laura Shook, 2-hour cafeteria employee at Shrop Intermediate effective September 15, 2022, in addition to bus driver position. Jessica Wright, 2-hour cafeteria employee at Springfield High School and Junior High effective September 15, 2022, in addition to bus monitor position. Darren Hurst, 4-hour bus driver on Route 54 effective September 19, 2022, in addition to bus mechanic position. 8.8 employment. Reassign classified employee Brandy Nangle to the anticipated opening as cafeteria manager at Springfield High School and Junior High per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure effective October 1, 2022. 8.9 employment. Reemploy Jeff Allen from the reduction in force list per the negotiated agreement with Opsy 530 as a 4.5-hour routed bus driver on Route 64 pending proper licensure effective August 24, 2022. 8.10 employment. Employ the following classified substitutes per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure effective the first day assigned. Samantha Baker, Carol Bean, Selena Nangle, James Ramirez. 8.11 employment. Employ Elizabeth Ryan as a 6.5-hour teaching assistant at Shrop Intermediate per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure effective September 13, 2022. 8.12 employment. Employ Danielle James as a 7-hour teaching assistant at Springfield High School and Junior High per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure effective September 15, 2022. 8.13 employment. Employ Samantha Baker as a 2-hour educational assistant at Spring Hill Elementary per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure effective September 15, 2022. 8.14 employment. Employ Michelle Bean as a 2-hour cafeteria employee at Shrop Intermediate per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure effective September 19, 2022.
8.15 and 8.16 we're going to be removing from the agenda right now. This is, we received some questions from SLAC regarding this position and we want to make sure, being that this is a paid position, we want to make sure that we're following SLAC correctly on that one. So we will put that back on next month.
Okay. 8.17, home instructors. Employ the following as home instructors as needed for the 2022-23 school year pending proper licensure. Leona Cable Baldinger and Ray Lynn Craig.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion. That's the 8.15 and 16 removed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, please. And these positions, the reassignments, that's per the negotiated agreement, and the new employments, these are not new positions but openings that we had, where people have left before.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Item passes. Item nine, memorandum of understanding proposal for Summit ESC Title III Consortium. It is recommended that the board approve a memorandum of understanding with the Summit ESC for a proposal for the creation of a Title III consortium, Exhibit 6.
So this falls under my department. We...
Let's move in second at first.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay.
I'm eager to talk.
Some moved.
Second.
Now.
Now.
This falls with me. We work with the Summit County ESC to provide services under Title III, which includes our English learners' population. So because we work as Summit County as a whole, it sort of makes it so we can get appropriate services for kids as a whole group, as a county, because not one district has a bunch of kids. We all have a handful here and there. So it helps us be able to provide them services and programming.
Additionally, they serve as our, they serve as pulling the money down because we don't receive enough in the grant for it to be allocated into our CCIP independently. So unless we joined a consortium, we would not have access to those funds. So they work as a treasurer for us in that specific grant.
Do they provide our provisions for multi-language or if you're doing, I mean, do they have a, I don't know how to ask. Yeah, I mean, if they are different language students learning English, do they have that source?
Yeah, they're, so the ESC, it's not a, you know, a big chunk of money. It's just enough to provide us some resources for the students that are English language learners. Yes.
But you can get whatever we need.
Yeah, whatever is appropriate for Springfield.
And we do have an EL tutor.
Yes.
That meets the needs for our kids.
I just was asked, you know, about the consortium.
This just helps us get a lower price for joining a consortium.
It allows us to access the funds completely. Without that, we would not, without a consortium, your allocation has to be bigger than a specific amount. We don't receive that amount in order to get it allocated directly to Springfield. So we have to be in a consortium in order to get those funds. Otherwise, ODE would be able to keep, ODE and their subsidiaries, whatever they happen to be, would be able to keep them.
That's a good move. Thank you.
Good job.
Yeah, we want it.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Item passes. Item 10, service proposal, Weatherproofing Technologies Incorporated. It is recommended that the board approve a service proposal with Weatherproofing Technologies, Inc., WTI, to provide investigation and report of roof, roofing at Shrop, Spring Hill, preschool center, maintenance shop, and young to guide our upcoming maintenance priorities. Exhibit 7.
Some moved. I'll second.
Okay. I gave each one of the board members a packet here with some information, starting off with some information about WTI and their subsidiary Trimco that we work locally here with. They are a preferred partner through the Ohio Schools Council, which is an organization that we partner with here in Ohio that, among many things, they go out, get competitive pricing for utilities. That's one of the services that we use through them. And they also vet vendors, do competitive bidding with vendors and rate their services. And Trimco is one of their preferred partners plus through that organization there. Some of the other partners here that you'll see there are energy optimizers, which we've done projects with in the past, as well as gardener that we currently work with for many of our HVAC systems, and Liberty Mutual, which we utilize is one of our insurance carriers there. This analysis will be looking at all of our roofing systems, which is one of our largest capital maintenance items that we have in the district there, especially with the flat roofing systems that are utilized in most cases here. This process will be going around to investigate and give a report, which the board members have a sample report from another district that's conducted there. The process consists of doing infrared imaging to identify temperature differences, which are indicative of moisture in the roofing material, and then following that through with a nuclear survey to document the density of the moisture and selective core samples to verify findings there. With this report, the reason that we'd like to do this is to become more proactive with our roofing maintenance and replacement plan here rather than reacting to leaks as they occur. This will allow us to create a master plan, if you will, that we can take out over the next five to 10 years and develop a plan for which repairs need to be done immediately, which repairs can wait, replacements that we may need to plan for in the future. Without this, we're sort of always just responding to issues and taking an educated guess sometimes of repairs. With flat roofing systems, they're layered systems, it's very easy to have a roof leak in this, you know, in room 700 here, but the actual problem be above room, you know, 710 down the hallway and that to follow the roofing systems there. So this will give us the information to be able to attack those problems with data versus just going up there and hoping we find the problem. I think the biggest comparison I can make is with ourselves, you know, we don't often go in for surgery without doing an MRI or an X-ray first, and this is the equivalent on that end of looking at our roofing systems and understanding them completely so that we can develop that master plan.
I like it that it's proactive, you know, actually looking at the lifespan, if there is a lifespan, how short one is and where to go next. Makes common sense.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Item passes. Item 11, Title I, interagency agreements. It is recommended that the board approve the following Title I interagency agreements for the 2022-23 school year to provide Title I services to residents of Springfield local schools who attend private schools located within these districts, Exhibit 8. Barberton City Schools, St. Augustine, Waterloo Local School District, St. Joseph's School, Coventry Local Schools, St. Francis de South.
Make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
With the rules and regulations of Title I, they stipulate that Title I dollars actually follow the students. This is one of the more unique grants. In this particular case, we have students at St. Augustine, St. Joseph's, and St. Francis, and because of the way the students are reported, there are students who qualify for Title I dollars due to poverty. So what happens is, is we work with our public school partners, Barberton, Waterloo, and Coventry, and we allocate, we do an interagency agreement with them. They provide the services within those private schools. So we are not paying the private school. We are paying the public school who provides the services within that private school. So our students, because they still are Springfield students, right? So our students will still get services even though they are attending private schools.
Who made, I didn't catch that. You made the motion, second. I know you...
Cynthia, and then Marianne, the second.
Okay, thank you.
I forgot already.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Item passes. Item 12, 2022-23 bus routes. It is recommended that the board approve the bus routes for the 2022-23 school year and authorize the superintendent or designate to make changes as necessary during the 2022-23 school year to address enrollment changes and safety issues. Exhibit 9.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
This just simply, you know, the attached, you'll see the most recent routing information. This just gives us the opportunity in case something does come up that we can change the routes without getting a board approval on it.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Item passes. Item 13, appropriations resolution for fiscal year 2023. It is recommended that the board approve the appropriations resolution for fiscal year 2023 in Exhibit 10.
Some moved.
Second.
I'm going to be going over during my presentation, this is kind of a unique year because we're dealing with the state, and I'm going to explain how all these appropriations, five-year forecast, fiscal recovery plan now are linked together, meaning that all three plans have the same amount of money. So, and I'll go over some more stuff about that. Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes. Item passes. Item 14, overnight extended trip, 14.1 U.S. National Parks. It is recommended that the board approve an overnight extended trip for the students of Springfield High School and Junior High and chaperones to travel to the Grand Canyon, Bryce, and Zion National Parks from June 26 through July 1, 2023. All expenses will be paid through fundraising and by participants. Board members have received copies of the trip proposal.
I'll make a motion to pass it.
I'll second that.
So this is something a little bit different. You know, as always, our kids go on trips to Europe and everywhere. So we decided, you know, we got some great things right here in the United States that really can meet the standards. So it's going to meet the social studies and science standards. So we decided that we were going to take a trip in the United States to see the national parks and to learn about them.
Can I become a kid again?
Absolutely.
I think the board members should get to go.
But as chaperones you may.
Okay. Till you see the price and you want to go. Yeah.
You could join some fundraising.
You could do some fundraising.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Item passes. Item 15, donations. 15.1, first student. A donation of $400 from first student to provide opening day refreshments to staff at a cost of $130. The remainder will be used as deemed necessary. 15.2 Coca-Cola Consolidated Incorporated. Donation of four tickets to Cedar Point, four large insulated tumblers, and two portable speakers valued at approximately $400 to Springfield High School and Junior High for the Spartan Standard Program prizes.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
First, you know, we want to thank everybody who does do the donations. First student, they provided the, for the donuts that we had on opening day. And since, I don't know how much donuts cost, and I said $400 and only came to $130, they said we could keep the remainder of the money for what we may need. Coca-Cola for the Spartan Standard Program, and Mrs. Warner's here, and I just wanted to talk real briefly about what the Standards, Spartan Standard Program is.
Sure.
So the Spartan...
Give me the mic over there.
She didn't know she was going to speak.
I didn't, but that's okay. The Spartan Standard is our PBIS initiative. It's district-wide. In this building, we focus on the fact that students are responsible, respectful, safe, and kind. And throughout the day, when students exhibit any of those behaviors, they receive a ticket and immediate confirmation that their behavior was good from their teacher. They then bring those tickets to the office and they go in a hopper. Every morning, we poll a student's name, and then at the end of the week, from the students who've been polled, we choose someone for a weekly prize. Those items that were donated by Coca-Cola, those are in the display case in the rotunda. Those are the bigger prizes. The students are really excited specifically about those Cedar Point tickets, you know, hollowed weekends or whatever it's called up at Cedar Point. They're two full tickets, so those are two prizes, even though we got four tickets, so that they can have a friend to go with. So we're really thankful that Coke helped us out like that. And I expect that we'll get some more donations from later in the year.
Thank you. And just, you know, the good work that's happening with the PBIS. The high school has, was a bronze recipient of PBIS to all of Ohio. And I think you saw that in my board notes, and that is a really great honor that our high school has received that.
Yes, I think we have that banner as you come in the front door, door A as well.
Awesome. So, you know, congratulations in order for that.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Item passes. Item 16, treasurer's report.
Does the state have a new software package?
It does.
It all look, yeah, I looked through it.
I worked through it.
Yep, this is new.
In the beginning, yeah, the staff was a little frustrated, but I don't hear much screaming now, so things are getting better. I want you guys to focus on the top number, the general fund. Like I said, years passed when I created the appropriations. You always had a standard from the treasurer that your appropriations were just a little more, 3%, than you probably thought they were going to be. So you didn't have to do it again, go to the county. But things have changed now. We have our friends from the state, and they want us to appropriate almost to the dollar, the same as the five-year forecast and the same as the fiscal, as the financial recovery plan. So that makes it a little difficult. Thank goodness, we have spreadsheets that can blow out numbers. So, you know, like my wages, I had 1.0698336 to get to the dollar. I mean, I had to keep expanding to decimals. So you'll notice that I anticipate after a few more months, and when we do our five-year forecast, because we're going to do two, we're going to do one, and then we're going to do another one when the levy passes. So we're ready to go with all the programs that we want to implement. After that occurs, then the appropriation will change accordingly. But the reason for the wait is we have a lot of new things going on right now. The benefit program right now is a, we're looking at it. We have an anticipated savings, but we really, you know, until we have four, four months of actuals, okay, you really don't want to change it every month because then it just doesn't look good. So the state has agreed to that. Another one I went, Dave brought it up, Mr. Hofer brought it up before the meeting, is capital projects. That's quite a large number. We don't get that kind of money in. If you remember, about a year and a half ago, we did a transfer from our construction account into our general fund. They got involved in it because it was a large transfer. So we had to get authorization from the state, which didn't want to do it, and they kicked it up to the county, up to the Summit County in the court system. They didn't want to do it. So we finally got the budget commission of Summit County to do it, but they wouldn't do it unless we dropped it into PI. So we can always use those funds in PI. Any funds that we typically didn't have the money in PI that we spent out of general fund, we can now use our PI money. So that's a big relief. Second thing I want to talk about, obviously, is the levy coming up. I can honestly say that you're never going to get a cheaper, bigger bang for your buck than the levy that's going to come up. A 3.9 is very inexpensive in today's world. It will give us financial stability for five years plus, which from a treasurer's standpoint, and from the board member's standpoint, and from the teacher's standpoint, our district needs it terribly. Our children need it. Our secondary children need it to compete with our surrounding districts. They're, we can't service them properly without additional funds. I think we all realize that. So I'm going to be talking about the levy every meeting up to the levy, so I'm sorry if it gets redundant, but it's so very, very important. but it's so very, very important. Any questions from the board?
No, just statement. I know that our capital improvements, for somebody, it's been a maintenance for my whole career. That's, that's a blessing and that we spent wisely on projects that are, that we've needed to spend on for quite some time.
Yeah.
Chris, you talked about PI money. People watching may not know what PI money is.
Good, good, good question. PI is permanent improvement. We have a, we have a funding source for permanent improvement, but it's only about three hundred thousand dollars a year. That sounds like a lot, but as Dustin says, I was talking about the roofing system. I mean, you have a major roofing issue in one of your schools that could be wiped out. And we have other needs outside of just roofing, so.
And that, and that levy, if I'm correct, was passed a long time ago when, when your standards of labor were a lot cheaper than they are now. So that choose that money up rather quickly.
It does. It does. Three hundred thousand dollars twenty years ago, you know.
It went, it went far.
We all know what housing and construction and, I mean, we have neighboring districts that are trying to build new buildings that are seeing what it's like now. And they just can't do what they wanna do. So, all right, thank you.
Item seventeen central office report.
I'm gonna start off the CV real quick with just a thank you to all of our staff for their hard work and dedication bringing the start of the school year together. Our staff's been working extremely hard with limited resources, just working countless hours to make sure that the school days run as smoothly as possible. Highlighted there is our transportation department's been facing staffing challenges, as we have everywhere in the district. But nearly every single day, we've, you know, had to work some sort of magic to make sure all the buses have been, been rolling. And we have hit a few bumps in the road, some delays. But thankfully, we've only had to have delays at this point. But I'd just like to thank them all and all those who've been working hard to support them for keeping the buses on the road. And you know, take this time to mention that bus driver shortages are being felt across the country. Springfield is certainly no exception. And if we have, currently have open contracted positions available, if you or anybody you know is interested in becoming a bus driver, please reach out to the bus garage at seven nine eight one oh one oh.
I appreciate your time tonight. I'm going to take us through the Springfield report card from the Ohio Department of Education. You should have one at your seats. It will be just a quick overview. We're not going to dig down really far into the data. But overall, we were pleased with the report card, but we're not satisfied with the report card, so please know that. In the, in all the subgroups that they rated, with the exception of one, we got three stars, which was out, which is considered performing at state standard. One section, we did get two stars, which means we are slightly below state standard, but I'll get to that when we, when we go through it. So let's start with just the very first one on the left-hand side, achievement. This means that our students were performing at the threshold that is required by state standards, and so they scored us three stars, max is five. So we're right in the middle there. It, it was nice that we met the state standard in academic achievement. Next to that, we have progress. This looks at the growth of all the students on all the tests that we take. Overall, every single one of our subjects across the board got at growth, at meeting state growth. And that was, that was nice. We did have some that were over expected growth, but it all equaled out to every grade, every subject was at expected growth, which was a fabulous, fabulous treat for us. Gap closing, that is where we have subgroups that are below where the entire group is, and we are trying to close this gap from here to here. And so we get rated on that. It says that we're making appropriate growth when we go through the gap closing too. So we're moving our kids forward as we should in those subgroups to get them up to where the rest of the students are. Then we have graduation rate. You know what, I'm gonna go back to, to gap closing for a second. One of our biggest problems in gap closing right now is we have a huge percentage of chronically absent students. Chronically absent students are students who miss more than ten percent of the school instructional year. Our chronically absent rates for a district is over forty percent. So I know, like, I, just looks on your faces and watching your reactions, we're at the same spot. It's hard to teach the kids when they're not here. Fortunately, we started working on that already as our district leadership team in order to put some things in place to hopefully decrease that percentage and increase students attending. So we are working on that one already, and hopefully that will affect our gap closing. Graduation, a four-year graduation rate, we're at approximately ninety-one percent if you round up just a little bit. And a five-year, we're at almost ninety-seven percent. That is saying that the kids who entered in fall of two thousand seventeen, ninety, almost ninety-one percent of them graduated in four years. If you go back to the fall of sixteen and you count in that fifth year, just in case someone needs a fifth year, we're at almost ninety-seven percent graduation. That's great, because it means our dropout rate is, is minimal. The early literacy seems to be, right now, the thing that we are focusing on. It is the one area that we did get two stars in and says that we are not necessarily meeting state expectations. We're slightly below it. However, several years ago, we did start to implement a whole new way of teaching English language arts, reading, language arts, spelling. So we started that to, at the beginning of, not when we were closed down during the pandemic, but as we came back from the pandemic, we started the adjustments then. We're hoping that as we continue to implement these adjustments, teaching phonemic awareness, teaching phonics, teaching decodable books, focusing on teaching kids to read, that this score will go up. Based off of research and evidence that has been collected, we're going to see leaps and bounds coming out of this new, this indicator. And then we do have, finally, the college and career workforce and military readiness. They are not scoring this one yet, because they're not quite sure how they're going to score this. And some of the problem with this one becomes, they want to be able to track kids after they leave high school. And they know that that could be burdensome for us as schools to track students once they leave. So they are trying to come up with exactly how they're going to do this. But right now, they're focusing some of it on ACT scores, watching kids who go into our local universities, following up with them, the Ohio Means Jobs, work centers and things like that reporting out. So they are trying to get creative to figure out how they're exactly going to score this one. So overall, like I said, we are pleased with it, but we're not satisfied with it. We're not gonna stop working. Our teachers are working hard. Our students are working hard. Our administration is working hard. And we're all working hard together on the same team in order to move these things forward. Any questions?
I have a couple.
Sure.
How many days does a kid need to be absent to miss ten percent of the year?
So if you go off the days, you're looking at about seventeen days.
Okay.
Does that qualify then?
Those are both excused and unexcused.
Unexcused, was that household, was it four, ten?
This is, this is.
That kicks in for the, for the truancy?
To some extent, the excuse, the excuse not as much. The unexcused, yes, it does. But we are starting to track both, because we realize that even the excused ones, eventually, if they start off excused down at the lower levels, it may grow into an unexcused as you get older.
Got you. And then the early literacy, most of these kids that are being tested were COVID readers, correct? Kids that were taught online?
Some, some of them were online, yes. These are babies. They're babies. They were definitely affected by the shutdown in the pandemic. Yes, because the task that, the, the area of early literacy is looking through third grade.
Right.
So yes, absolutely. Good point.
All right, thanks.
So Mrs. Meadows had a lot of information that she shared. So I just wanted to share with you, over the summer, I met with a couple of the intervention specialists to talk about project-based learning. And I thought in their particular classrooms, that if they took a project-based approach to their classrooms, maybe they would see more participation, more a rise in student achievement within their own individual classroom. And Mr. Curry recently has shared with me a lot of information about some of the projects that he's working on. And today, he actually sent me an idea that he wants to fly out there to see if it might be something we can do. But he's really been very excited. They studied some other countries. So then, after, the culminating activity for the stuttering, study, studying other countries was a cooking project of making food of those other countries. So the kids made Greek meatballs when they were studying Greece. And there were a couple other projects they did that were hands-on, and the students were the facilitators of their learning on those projects. So I'm excited to see where he takes it. And I'm just really proud that he's trying something different in his classroom this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eighteen superintendent's report.
So first, you know, let me say that the safety of our students, families, fans, visitors, it takes precedent over everything. And I'm really thankful that our Lakemore Police attends all our football games, and they're diligent, walking around and interacting with, with the crowd. And I do wanna thank and commend them for their quick response to the incident that we had on Friday night, and their assurance that the situation was contained, and which allowed us to continue on with the game. So with that said, you know, safety being our number one concern, for our remaining home games, we are gonna put another layer of safety in there. And we're not gonna be allowing any backpacks or large bags into the football games. There's really no reason why somebody needs to bring a backpack into the football games. Everything they have is there. The police, if they see a bag that they think might be a little bit large, they will search it. We have talked with Lakemore Police, and they think that this is a good step towards, you know, providing that safety that we have for our football games. You know, and like I said, we will work on the police as we work on this new protocol. We are speaking with other schools. Mr. Vaughn has been talking with other athletic directors. We're, I'm meeting with the superintendents of our, of our division to talk about, you know, if we can make some things that would be consistent for all, for the, for all our games, for the safety. And one of the things that we always have to make sure of is that when you see something, you say something. And, you know, I, I give that, Mr. Hofer, you, you did that today at, at Spring Hill. When you see, when you see something, you say something. And that's the way that we are going to help guarantee, you know, the safety of everybody. But like, again, I wanna just thank the Lakemore Police for all their help. And then Dustin, we had the sheriffs come in then.
Yes.
So, you know, the sheriff stepped up for that. Springfield was a little bit busy that night. So, but how everybody just came together and worked. And I wanna thank my team also that just went right into full mode, and we got everything done that we wanted to do. So thank you for that. On a good note, I wanna thank everybody who attended the Assembly of God. Springfield Assembly of God had a community event. So I wanna thank everybody who attended that. And then the Springfield Cruz Inn and K-9 event on Sunday. We had a table set up for there, trying to get people interested in getting jobs. Everybody who walked by, talked a little bit about the levy. And we had a lot of people stop at our tables, so that was something very nice to see. So just again, thank everybody who's participating in all these different community events.
Thank you. Item nineteen, items worthy of your note. October fourteenth, NEOEA Day, no school. October eighteenth, next regular Board of Education meeting, six P.M., Community Room. October twentieth, SROP intermediate conferences, three thirty to seven thirty P.M. October twenty-first, end of first quarter. October twenty-seventh, SROP intermediate conferences, three thirty to seven thirty P.M. October twenty-seventh, Springfield High School and Junior High Conferences, three to seven P.M. Item twenty, citizens' comments. Participants shall be limited to five-minute durations. Seeing none. Board members informal. I, I would just like to report that it was my pleasure to meet a couple of outstanding band students on Saturday, came around asking for some money. And they couldn't have been more professional or more well-dressed in their uniforms. So I hope we have a budget for dry cleaning, because it was hot that day. Yeah, it was hot that day. But they were, they were so pleasant. They had an adult with them, and they were talking up their program and, and kudos to them. Good, good for them.
Thank you.
We, can I talk about?
Yes, please. I meant to, I forgot.
Well, I don't wanna, we had, or the levy, we had an initial levy planning committee last night. It was not an open invitation. It was more a back gathering and getting ideas from the people that had, were chairpersons or committee heads for the last levy, because, you know, we wanna know, we, I think we've made a lot of progress. A lot of progress was made in enlisting support. But for those that were there, what did you observe? What suggestions do you, you know, do you bring to us? What did we do that maybe we wouldn't wanna repeat because of lat, not because it was a bad thing, but it maybe the time spent on that could be allotted to something else. So I think that the next step for us, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, is to grow that committee, so that we have people who are really interested in working on, or have the time. I, I think we have interest. But are able to give the time to work on it. And Dustin, will that, the committee outline be put on the levy?
Website?
Yeah.
Moving screen.
Because we tried to, an attempt was made to identify what the vision of how the committees would, would run, and then to list some, there were some bullets that we, that were created just to say, if you're on this committee, we would hope that this could be accomplished. Because, you know, we ask people, people are asked to volunteer, but if you don't know what you're volunteering for, somewhat hesitant, and I know for me too. So if you look, if that, if you look at that, and I'm sure there'll be a, a way to contact, send your name, or Dustin will come up with something that, and then we'll have another meeting, send it out, send the announcement out. And hopefully, we will be able to move forward. And, you know, I think from the data that we, that was analyzed for the May levy, you know, we all know that there wasn't a huge turnout for voting. And there were a lot of registered parents who didn't, weren't, for whatever reason, able to vote or didn't vote. So we're hoping to reach out in a more face-to-face, door-knocking, just something where we're not just speaking in total generality. So thank you for your support, and let's build it, because I think we can do it this time. Do you want me to mention anything else?
No, I think that was great.
Okay.
The only thing I would add to that is if anybody has any questions about the levy, we do have a frequently asked questions, but there's questions that you may have, you know, email myself, anybody on the team, and we will answer them as for you, and then we will add them to our FAQs.
I just wanna say, I was at Spring Hill this morning, and it was a very, very clean facility. I was amazed at how bright it was, how warming it was. And I popped my head in a few classrooms and said, "Morning, class." And the kids would all respond, and I would tell the teacher, "You've taught them well," you know. And that was rather pleasing. It was very pleasing. Thanks, Dustin, to your crew there. Would you pass that on to them?
Sure will.
They have done a fantastic job of keeping that building clean and getting it ready for the new school year. That's all I've got.
All right.
Today's National Registration to Vote Day, so everybody should use that and go register yourself to vote. I was at the game on Friday. Our alumni band, we had some people there, we had our family there that are not from Springfield. And my dad was like, And my dad was like, "They're better than the Ohio State band." They were unbelievable. We had people at our snow cone machine fine, and we asked them if we could stop, because we actually wanted to watch the band. And my daughter's friend Paige was twirling. She's only in fifth grade, so she was showing a lot of people up out there. But it really shows how much of a band program that we have here and the dedication to Mr. Cole of everybody showing up. So congratulations to them, and a great night. To go off of the levy, we want everybody to come out that can come out. We understand that even if you only have an hour on maybe this night or that night, that could help us in ways that haven't helped us before. So we do need your help, and we hope that people will come out. And this time, that we'll have a party after it passes. We will be out there all night at Uncle Tito's. So.
Looking forward to it.
That's all I have.
Okay. Item 22, adjournment. It is recommended that the meeting be adjourned at this time.
So moved.
Go ahead, you got it.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.